Good evening. Welcome to the Double Oak Town Council Meeting from Monday, May 15, 2023. The time is 7:01 PM. And Lynn, would you call the road call, please?
Mayor Donnelly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Protem Schoenrad, Councilmember Wizenhund, Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Or here, sorry. Councilmember Hillier.
Present.
We have a core.
Thank you, ma'am. This evening, we have a first, I'd like to welcome everybody who is able to be here with us tonight in person and those who are watching on the Double Oak YouTube channel. Thank you for joining us on this festive, exciting evening here in Double Oak. We're honored to welcome this evening to lead the invocation is our Crossroads Bible Church, our community pastor, senior pastor Charlie Rittenour. Pastor Rittenour, welcome. If you would lead us in prayer this evening.
I'd love to. Thanks for having me, everybody. It's a privilege to be the pastor of the largest church in Double Oak. I met soon to be Mayor Johnson a couple minutes ago, and I just want to say thanks for all your service. I told him my family moved to Double Oak in 1988, and I grew up here, and my parents still live on 210 Shady Hill Lane. So it's been amazing watching the city grow, and God has a sense of humor. I'm right back here. I love it. Let me pray for us tonight. God, we are thankful for the city. We're thankful to call such a special community home. We're thankful for the people that serve this place to make it better for our families and our friends and our communities. As we come together tonight to celebrate the next chapter of leadership in Double Oak, I just, I pray for the leaders that serve. I pray for the people that are on the town council and for the soon to be mayor. God, give them wisdom and guide them as they lead our city. Give them a love for our streets and our people. Give them a clarity around how we should go forward to best honor you as a city of a large metropolitan area. God, we take some time and pray for the first responders, the firefighters, police officers, specifically for our fallen officers, the Mestis, Sneed, and Murphy families. God, continue to comfort them. Be with them. Let them know that their sacrifice wasn't in vain and that they were loved. God, go before all first responders and continue to protect them as they try and protect us. And God, I pray for the people of this city, that you continue to build in us a love for one another, to live out the ways of Jesus, to love one another as we love ourselves. And in doing that, we might reflect something much greater than just a small city, but the gospel of Christ that goes before us all, that's worth living for, and that tells the greatest message we know, that we're loved by God. We pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I just want to note, we have always had a great relationship with Crossroads Bible Church leadership and certainly Pastor Charlie. And he joined us back in March of 2020.
Yeah.
When we did our very first Zoom meetings and all, he was on that. So we've called on him many times. He has assisted with our police department, fire department, and many others, as other pastors have as well. And again, we thank you and the community at the church.
Thank you. It's a privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, this evening, Ms. Parsons is going to lead the pledges.
Casey.
All right, then that brings us to a couple announcements here. Certainly, this week is National Police Week, Sunday, May 14, 2023 through Saturday, May 20, 2023. It's to give respect and honor and remembrance, and always remember their service and sacrifice. Today is actually National Peace Officers Memorial Day, Monday, May 15, 2023. If you didn't get a chance beforehand, or you didn't see the email sent out today by the town communication, we have a memorial out at our Tom, Mayor Tom Pittcock Memorial Flagpole area. You're welcome to stop by as you leave here this evening, pay your respects to the officers if you wish. We are honored this evening to have our Sergeant Detective Hoffman with us this evening. Chief Rebus is out of town, and Chief Gaines is actually up in Washington DC. There were ceremonial National Police Officers Memorial Events this weekend to recognize them. Saturday night was a candlelight visual. If you imagine the mall outside between the US Capitol and the monument, it was full. Police officers from around the country, law enforcement and family and in general public. It was very nice candlelit service. Chief Gaines is present today with one of the officer's families. I believe ceremony probably concluded now, but they were on the grounds of the US Capitol today, again, remembering the nation's fallen officers. So Sergeant, we thank you for being here tonight and for your service. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so then we're going to go to citizens' comments on non-agenda subjects. And first up this evening is Ms. Phyllis Myerson. Welcome, Phyllis. And she's going to talk about town training. Phyllis, will you identify yourself, please?
Phyllis Myerson. Hasn't been a good day. Phyllis Myerson, 133 Eastview Court. Those of us on the council, P&amp;Z, and Board of Adjustments is aware that Thursday, we are having our town training with our attorney, David. I love town training. I think David is the hoot, and I use all of his stories over and over again. Obviously, there'll be a quorum from the three, the council, the commissions, and it will have to be posted. Some of you may recall, a couple of months ago, Candy LaMell got up and said that we should be opening the training to our citizens. Now, when I was the only citizen in the audience, it probably didn't matter a whole lot. But you guys are so into transparency, I think would be a really good idea to send out an email and tell people, especially now you got a room full of people, you have people who have been running for office, who have had not a lot of experience here. And so I think that that we should be opening the training to everybody in the town. And believe me, I've sat here for a long time. These people need training, and maybe we can get these meetings a lot more efficient.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Weaver. Welcome, sir. If you'll identify yourself for the record, please, and welcome.
My name is Andrew Weaver, North Hill Court, Double Oak, also the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's fitting today that we're actually here to honor the police officers, those police officers who have fallen. And unfortunately, the roles grow greater each and every day. But it's also fitting to honor the police officers who are here today in uniform, because they have already made a commitment to run forward to danger. So they have already made that commitment of heroics, and it's worth honoring that as well. So congratulations to Mayor Donnelly for his many years of service for stepping up. Congratulations to Mr. Johnson, who will soon be Mr. Mayor. One of the agenda items tonight is the item of Mayor Protem. And it's important to remember what the council is being asked to do and the person who steps up to do. And you are stepping up now to be ready in the moment, should that come. Life has a way of happening, and all I ask is that as the council moves forward, that it understands what the police officers already have done, which is making that commitment to be ready should the circumstances ever require. Mr. Johnson did a fabulous job. I'm not critiquing, I'm just saying, life happens, and the council needs to be aware that what they're being asked to do is to think in the long term. So again, congratulations to the new members, and thank you to the police officers who are present today. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anyone else wish to speak on non-agenda, did not get a chance to sign up? All right, we're going to move forward then. All right, council, this evening, we have one item under consent. It's the consideration action on the minutes of May 1, 2023. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as it is.
A second.
All right, I have a motion by Casey, a second by Jean, to approve the minutes. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Lynn, will you call the road, please?
Ms. Hillier.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Parsons.
Aye.
All right, thank you, council. Counsel, I just, I do want to note, with those minutes reflect the budget amendments that council previously approved. Lynn will be putting all that information together, filing that with the Denton County Clerk's Office, and also communicating that out, the packet to the new council. And also, those things are being handled by administration. Thank you, Lynn. All right, Mayor, council staff reports. Start with Randall. Or I'll start with Patrick, I mean.
Thank you all for being here this evening, and thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, Casey?
I had some prepared comments, and I can't say it as well as Pastor Charlie did in his prayer of what his prayer is for our town, because that echoes my prayer for our town. And so just best wishes to the new incoming mayor and the new incoming council. And I look forward to the way that our town will grow and heal in the coming days and the time ahead.
Thank you, Casey. Thank you for your service. Jean?
I have two items. One was brought to me actually by several residents, and it's specific to any council meeting. But there is a concern that individuals wish to make their own personal video recordings, even though the meetings are recorded and being streamed live, that attendees doing that should perhaps consider moving to the back of the room, because it distracts people behind them and also occasionally obstructs their view. So I'm just passing that along as received from residents. The second one is relating to some lengthy discussions in the last couple of meetings about ADA compliance from Monsanto. And just want to upfront note that as a result of, I wouldn't say it's poor communication, but a lack of specific details, that neither Brian, who's our technology administrator, nor I, nor Casey, nor our mayor realize that when they sent the contracts, they actually sent six months to coincide with our budget year and then a year. But they don't sign or accept contracts for less than a year. So basically, at this point in time, we are not covered by anything, so it's a liability to the town. And I believe that it should be a fairly high priority to get that back on track as soon as we are able. I know that Brian has a meeting scheduled for tomorrow to work with the vendor on some additional details relating to that. And I also want to just clarify, in case people aren't aware, when the Technology Committee brings items to the town's council for discussion and potentially approval, the real, the real brains behind this is our technology administrator. He's, he's our staff. He's our knowledge expert. Had Brian not brought it to the attention of the Technology Committee, we wouldn't have been aware of the fact that we had items on our website that aren't compliant, because it's not obvious to the naked eye. It's obvious to those who are using assistive devices to access our town website. So I just want to clarify for anybody who's wondering, and certainly our new council members that will be installed tonight, that we're not making this stuff up to spend town money. It's really, in the case of this particular item, it's to avoid what could be a very expensive liability, because there are some hungry torturers out there. So just a clarification.
Thank you, Jean. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. All right, Public Works, Code Enforcement, Animal Control. Randall?
So far, everything's going really well. I do know that we are going to speak on a couple of the items tonight regarding the Wakedon Road project coming to an end. And we're going to bring a few of those things forward, just as far as the budgetary pieces of that. Outside of that, animal control, we've had contact with, with our current contract holder, and everything's gone well with that. And as far as code enforcement goes, we still keep addressing high grass and weeds. So please make sure that you continue to mow your grass regularly, so that it doesn't continue to cause harbages for animals or rodents or mosquitoes. Believe it or not, they hold moisture, and that causes issues. So please be cognizant of that. But for the most part, everything else is going really well.
All right, thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anything for Randall? Okay, Lynn, administration?
Not a lot. Eileen's been out for a little bit, so we're just kind of carrying on and wishing her well and hoping she can come back soon.
Wish Eileen well, and thank you all and administration for carrying things forward for us. We appreciate it. Counsel, in the administration area of your agenda backup, was the most recent year-to-date financial report in the balance sheet, and I believe that was also sent to the new members as well, or it's going to be at your desk tonight when you take it. I think it's really important, the first day you take office, and this is not new for me to say, that the new council have the financial status of the town in print and electronic form, because then when you're sitting here, you're now responsible for these tax dollars. So make sure everybody has the same information from day one. So thank you, Lynn. All right, public safety. Scott's not here tonight, but Sergeant, anything from the police department this evening?
What you mentioned earlier, Assistant Chief Gaines is up in Washington DC honoring Officer Mestis and Officer Sneed. She should be back, I think, Wednesday. And also that we have scheduled two active shooter trainings just for our side. Obviously, the tragedies that are happening across Texas and the nation, we're just trying to stay up to date with this training as much as possible. So we have a couple of classes or training that's taking place here, have taken place in May and in June. So like I said, we can be unfortunately ready to go in case a situation like that happens, so.
And we've heard some feedback from the officers on the recent training that they've had over the last two weeks. And though very, very serious matter, they are highly excited about the training they are receiving with another agencies and all. And so thank y'all for your always work on that. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Anything for police department? Roads and Drainage Committee, nothing this evening, I don't believe, is there?
None of update.
Okay. All right, then, that brings us to the new business agenda section of the meeting this evening. Item number seven, Discussion, Consideration, Action on an Ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Double Oak, Texas. Canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the town's general election held on May 6, 2023, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two town council members-at-large. Assistant Town Secretary Lynn Jones. Lynn?
You will see in front of you the actual totals from Denton County. We did not get those until 1 o'clock this afternoon. So I printed them off and put them in front of you. But this ordinance is just to confirm that every valid vote was counted and included in the election totals, and that's called canvassing the vote, and that's what this ordinance is for.
Thank you, Lynn. And Lynn, I believe you're looking for a, someone to move for approval of the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So council, give you a second look over that, and then if someone wishes to make a motion to move for approval of the ordinance and the rest of the agenda item?
I will move on an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Double Oak, Texas, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the town's general election held on May 6, 2023, for the purpose of electing a mayor and two town council members-at-large.
Motion by Patrick?
Second.
Second by Casey. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Lynn, will you call the road, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Ms. Parsons?
Aye.
All right, the ordinance is approved. The canvassing has been completed. Now it is time to administer the yells. This evening, we are quite honored to have with us this evening Denton County Judge Robert Ramirez. Judge Ramirez is the Denton County Court at Law Number Two Judge, good friend to Double Oak and to our police department. And Judge, you can make your way up here. I just wanted to say a little bit about the judge here. He is highly respected throughout Denton County and the state of Texas. He makes himself available to law enforcement at all hours, including Double Oak, to sign warrants and other needs that the police departments may have. So very fortunate to have Judge Ramirez in that capacity. And likewise, I know his colleagues on the judicial front here in Denton County do the same. But Judge Ramirez, we appreciate all of your help that you give to the Double Oak Police Department. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And Judge, would you please introduce yourself to the audience and everyone, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me out here this evening. Again, my name is Robert Ramirez. I am the judge of County Court at Law Number Two for Denton County. So I won't bore you all with an explanation of Texas judiciary, of the Texas judiciary, but I will say a little bit about it. So in Texas, the lowest level of courts are your municipal courts and your Justice of the Peace Courts. Those are one level. The next level up are what we call the Texas Trial Courts. Those are the county courts at law for the counties, as well as the state district courts. They serve in the same courthouse, and here are similar types of cases. The next level are the Courts of Appeals. There are currently 14, about to be 15, I think, Courts of Appeals throughout the state of Texas. The one for our area is the Second Court of Appeals located in Fort Worth. And then, just out of curiosity, how many Supreme Courts do you all think there are in Texas? How many? You're right. There are indeed two Supreme Courts in the state of Texas. Only one is called the Texas Supreme Court. It's easiest to describe its jurisdiction by describing the other. The Court of Criminal Appeals is the criminal court of last resort. The Texas Supreme Court hears everything else. So now you've heard more than enough about Texas judiciary. I've put most of you to sleep, but I thought it's important to say a few things about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, Lynn, if you want to do your thing here. Yes, so as the, the persons who are elected are sworn in, and Randall, you're going to move that and all. You're welcome to take pictures, video, whatever you wish to do. I will tell everyone who is being sworn in, once the actual swearing-in is completed, if you would stay posed, Randall is going to take pictures for the town, and we want to make sure to get those this evening. So with that, back to my sheet here, with that this evening, our first oath of office will be to Mayor-elect Patrick Johnson. So Lynn, get him centered, if you would.
Mr. Mayor, if you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Patrick Johnson.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully
execute the duties of the office of the duties of the office of the mayor of the Town of Double Oak, for the state of Texas.
For the state of Texas.
And to the best of my abilities
And the best of my abilities
will preserve, protect, and defend
Will preserve, protect, and defend
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Like you're doing the oath, isn't it?
Okay.
This is easier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for serving. Appreciate you. Do we want to do them all afterwards, or do we want to do them?
Okay, perfect.
All right, who's up next? Councilman, if you would, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Mike Wardy.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
councilman of the Town of Double Oak.
Councilman of the Town of Double Oak.
of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
and the great state of Texas. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Madam Councilwoman. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Pat Wellin.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will faithfully execute the duties
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
of the office of Councilwoman
Of the office of Councilwoman.
for the Town of Double Oak
For the Town of Double Oak.
of the great state of Texas
Of the great state of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
And will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
Preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and of the great state of Texas. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilwoman. Yep.
Set your names, okay, on everybody.
Yeah.
It's only here I can sign on with, okay? And then the second one, I think. And then the second one, I think. He's getting these. There, set on.
Awesome. Also, Patrick's. Is that the extra? Double check the stand, make sure it's good. It is? It stays in my car, so you never know. Through and assembly line these for you all.
Thank you, Judge, for being here. Very much appreciated to Lynn for setting this all up. We're going to do a quick bit of town business, and then we're going to break for reception. We're going to honor Casey for all the work that she's done here in the town. And we're going to recognize Scott Wisenhunt as well. So just a couple of quick items that we have to take care of today. And it was brought up during the public comments about the importance of doing the right thing by Mayor Pro Tem. And so what we are going to do next is two items, Items 12 and Items 13. And we are going to, as a council, select a Mayor Pro Tem and a Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. And how this will work is each item will be... Motion will be made a second. And there can be multiple nominations. And we'll go through for a vote afterwards. So I would like to go to discussion and consideration and action on selection of a Mayor Pro Tem. We'll open up to discussion with the council.
I would like to nominate Councilwoman Connie Shonrad for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Other nominations? Go ahead and move to vote. Lynn, please call the roll.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Mr. Wharton?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
The motion passes. Connie Shonrad will be our new Mayor Pro Tem. We appreciate the work that she's done on the council as Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, and we look forward to working with her as the Mayor Pro Tem. And we will be glad when you get back, Connie. So thank you. Item 13 is discussion, consideration, and action on selection of a Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. And I will open it up to the council for any discussion or motions for nomination.
I nominate Mike Wharton for Deputy Mayor Pro Tem.
I second.
Any other nominees? No other nominees? Lynn, will you please call the vote?
Mr. Wharton?
Aye.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Item 13 passes. Mike Wharton will be our new Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations to both of you. We look forward to working together as a council. I'm excited to have the opportunity as mayor to work with all of the council members. And now what we're going to do, folks, is we're going to take a break and have a reception. So the time is 7:35. And we're going to do the recognition. So, oh, that's... Oh, we do that before. Okay, I'm sorry.
Hey, Patrick, why don't you grab that mic?
Casey, would you please approach? Yeah, come on in over here. Right. Casey Parsons? We have some real nice items here for Casey. But more importantly, I worked with Mike on this. Casey Garrison Parsons won the election to the town council in May of 2021. She immediately embraced her council role and worked for the betterment of the town. Her financial experience and knowledge has been a great asset to the town. We have admired Casey's strength and toughness in town management. She comes to meetings prepared and can address questions from citizens, council, and staff. She is among the best and most thorough researchers on the town council. We respect her perspectives and opinions. Casey is known for asking, "How can I help and what can I do?" During Casey's council term, the town adopted balanced budgets, reduced its tax rate, and adopted property tax ceiling and local property tax exemption. She has assisted Town Treasurer Billy Garrett when called upon. Casey has a huge caring heart for the town's first responders and has supported requests from the town's public safety departments. Town administration has enjoyed working with her during her term. Casey has been a valuable member of the Double Oak Town Council. We owe all to her and her family gratitude of thanks. The town is set up for future success because of her efforts. Thank you, Casey. So what we have here is a... Flag from Krande Themish. She's one of our state representatives. And appreciate... Oh, I'm sorry. I grabbed the wrong one. Sorry. Sorry about that. And this comes with a State of Texas House of Representatives seal. And very much appreciate that, that Krande reached out to us for this, so... I believe it was. Is that what it says?
Yeah.
Okay. We also have a United States flag from Honorable Michael Burgess. He's a member of our... He's our congressman. And this is for the service to the town of Double Oak. And we have this flag here. Yeah, there we go. So, and we have all of these things for Casey. She doesn't need to sit there and hold them if she doesn't want to. Randall, I think this would be important for a good photo shoot for Casey. So this is a town sign with Councilman Parsons' name on it and her tenure on the council. I think these are really super cool, and we appreciate the opportunity to share this with you. And then we've got a nice plaque here. Yep. And this is... This is an awesome plaque. Says Casey Garrison Parsons, Honorary Mayor Pro Tem. Casey Garrison Parsons, Honorary Deputy Mayor Pro Tem. Casey Garrison Parsons, Councilmember. Casey Garrison Parsons, Assistant to Town Treasurer. Casey Garrison Parsons, Liaison to the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department and Double Oak Police Department. Councilmember Casey Garrison Parsons, Appreciation, May 15, 2023. Thank you. Casey, thank you very much. Chief Wisenhunt was unable to be here this evening, but we're going to go ahead and honor him as well. Scott Wisenhunt was first elected to town council in May of 2017. He has held the positions of Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem, and Mayor Pro Tem. He has always been a leader on the council and in the town. Scott gives his time serving on the town council and as fire chief for the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. And if it's not enough, Scott is the Emergency Management Coordinator for our town. Scott also has a full-time professional career. Scott served the citizens, city employees, as well on the town council. During his town council tenure, the town has reduced its property tax rate, enacted a property tax ceiling and local property tax exemption, strengthened its balance sheet, and was recognized in 2020 as the safest city in Texas, one of the safest cities in Texas. In his role as fire chief, the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department has increased its firefighter membership and improved training and certification. Chief Wisenhunt, the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department leadership and firefighters have achieved an insurance success, Insurance Services Office Class II ISO rating. This reflects fire service readiness and preparedness to protect the Double Oak community. This superior rating helps to lower the cost of all of your homeowners insurance. Scott, on behalf of the town, we offer our sincerest appreciation. And thanks to you and your wonderful family for all of your service. You have helped make Double Oak a great place to call home. So if we could go ahead and have a round of applause for Scott Wisenhunt. And we've got the same items as we gave to Casey. We have for Scott up here as well. So we appreciate all of the efforts that you both did on the council, and we appreciate it, and thank you. Last but not least, we've got a gentleman who just continues to step up for this town. Doesn't matter what's going on, where it's at. He's there for this town. And so we have a proclamation that we're going to read tonight. And we're going to call this Mayor... Excuse me, Mike Donley Appreciation Day. And I'm going to go ahead and read it. Whereas Mike Donley, his wife Triva, and daughter Elizabeth have been residents of the town of Double Oak for 21 years. And whereas Mike firmly believes and emphasizes through his words and actions that Double Oak, Texas is known as the town of volunteers. And whereas Mike, in addition to his full-time employment at American Airlines, has dedicated his time serving honorably in many volunteer roles and those appointed as well as elected positions. And whereas Mike has been a member of the town's budget committee for 20 years. And whereas Mike has recognized by the town during the 2003-2004 fiscal year and presented an award for promoting the safety of Double Oak children. And whereas Mike was first elected to the town council in 2004 and has served many terms off and on. And whereas Mike has additionally served in the position of Mayor Pro Tem and as Acting Treasurer when the position was vacant. And whereas Mike was elected mayor in May of 2009, serving the full term to 2011, had to step away for a year but was appointed by the council back in 2012, then served unopposed from 2012 to 2021, and was appointed once again in 2022 to serve until 2023. And whereas Mike's leadership has kept our property taxes the lowest in Denton County, kept our town debt-free, kept our one-acre minimum watt sizes, kept our town safe with 24-by-7 police and fire services, and kept Double Oak family-friendly. And whereas Mike and the town have always supported the Double Oak Police Department and are proud of the efforts earning Double Oak the title of safest city in Texas in December 2020 and named by Advisor Smith. And whereas Mike is a strong supporter of the Double Oak Women's Club and the Double Oak community. And whereas for both residents and employees, Mike has attended births, weddings, and funerals, graduations, ballgames, ribbon-cutting ceremonies, cookouts, worked with Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, working towards their Gold Star and Eagle Scout. He's always been available to everyone who needed him at any time. And whereas in his white pickup truck with his famous orange public works cones, Mike drives every street in the town each month. He fills small potholes, he picks up trash, he talks to the residents as he navigates the town, he keeps the town park clean and trash cans empty. He knows just about everyone in town, and they know him and his truck. And whereas Mike and the town are proud of the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, which improved the ISO rating to A2, which provide cost savings to the citizens' homeowners insurance. Whereas Mike represented the town in February 2007 and formed a partnership with American Airlines to provide automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and a training unit for the Double Oak Town Hall and Police Department. Whereas Mike loves community events, including the annual Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department July 4 parade and picnic, which in 2020 brought the parade to the residents with a 13.2-mile vehicle parade. He enjoys the annual Double Oak Christmas tree lighting and the Double Oak Women's Club Easter egg hunt pancake breakfast and their annual November auction that raises money for the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. He admires the Double Oak Women's Club members, community, and their spirit. Whereas Mike is the consummate public servant, town leader, and role model for future elected officials and volunteers. And whereas Mike is known to have traveled to Washington, D.C. and Austin to represent Double Oak and its citizens. Whereas Mike assisted with the community efforts to raise funds for the Double Oak Police Department fallen officers' families at the time of their passing. In Christmas time, the remembrance of three fallen officers and a fallen firefighter to the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas Mike assisted in the effort to add the three fallen officers' names, stones to the Mayor Tom Pidcock Memorial, which is right outside the building. Now therefore, I, Patrick Johnson, Mayor, and the Double Oak Town Council hereby declare Mike Donley, Double Oak Mayor Emeritus, and Monday, May 15, 2023, as Mike Donley Appreciation Day, and call upon our fellow citizens to join us in honoring Mayor Emeritus Mike Donley. Mike, if you would... Thank you. Yes, you can.
Never give them the mic, right? Yeah, I just want to take a minute to thank everybody. It's been a pleasure serving this town. Been a pleasure served with all of the colleagues I've served with on this town council over the years. And if you've served on the Double Oak Town Council, I know we have a couple of members here. Former mayor Bernie Carrico is here. Mayor Carrico, would you please stand? Be recognized. Current treasurer and former mayor pro tem Billy Garrett is here as well. Billy, will you stand? Am I missing anybody that's been on the council? Ginger, Ginger Britton, please stand. Ginger, I'm sorry. Give Ginger a hand back there. So it's been a pleasure serving with all the colleagues over the years. Certainly, we can't do it without great staff here. And over the years, we've been fortunate to have very dedicated individuals, employees, and administration and in the police department. We enjoy great relationships with our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department and certainly our Double Oak Women's Club. And Patrick will speak a little bit more on that here in a little bit. But really, all you citizens, our neighbors, our friends. I just want to thank you. It's been an honor. Thank you. And thank you to my wife and our daughter Elizabeth for putting up with this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. As Mike had mentioned, we do have another award here. And this is an award, it is in recognition of Bonnie Morrow, Double Oak Women's Club President, Town of Double Oak, for May of 2023. So Bonnie, for all the hard work that you've been doing and continue to do, this award is for you. Oh, Bonnie?
Thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss if we didn't recognize the hard work of our town administration. And Eileen is unable to be here. She's returning from some surgery. We're going to get her back here by the end of the month. But Lynn is here, and I definitely would like to say thank you to Lynn. She's been outstanding with the prep that I've been going through to take over the spot. So would you come, you got to come out front? I knew you'd do this. I'll pay for this one, Mike. So, thank you for everything you do for us. Very much appreciated. And thank you to Eileen. I would like to bring Sergeant Rosa Hoffman up. So we also have a flag for our Double Oak Police Department from Senator, or Congressman Burgess. And what I'd like to do is offer this to the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department today and say thank you for all of your efforts, everything you do, and appreciate it. Thank you. Yes. We also have a flag from Congressman Burgess as well for our Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department. And so we'll make sure that we get those over to them after our meeting. And we appreciate everything that the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department does for the town. I support them 100%. I'm excited to get out there and work with them as well as the Double Oak Police Department. Okay. Billy Garrett, would you please come up? Billy serves as our town treasurer. And besides that, she's been mayor pro tem. She's been, were you deputy mayor pro tem at one time too? Possibly. Town council. And so we wanted to recognize you here tonight. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Billy. I think that concludes our presentations for this evening. So now we are going to break at, what time is it? 7:55? So I'll have to hit the gavel here. But we're going to break for 7:55 for a reception in the lobby. Please join us. Thank you very much for attending tonight. We still have some council business to take care of after. So please feel free to come back in and see what the new council can do. So we'll, so come on out to the lobby and enjoy. Thank you.
It is now eight nineteen, we'll bring the meeting back to order. We're gonna move to item fourteen. Discussion, consideration and action on a nomination for Denko nine one one District Board of Managers. If some of you were here in a previous council meeting, the former mayor of Copper Canyon, Sue Tamel came over and she presented and talked to the town and the citizens about her qualifications. I was very impressed with what she had to say. Sue has been on the Denko nine one one now for quite a number of years. And so as a council, we're gonna go ahead and discuss and consider a nomination or her nomination from Double Oak, the town of Double Oak, for the Denko nine one one District Board of Managers. I'll go ahead and open this up to discussion with the council.
Were there any other nominations besides hers?
There was not.
As she mentioned and Patrick just reviewed, she has been doing this for a number of years and has represented us well. And really has an excellent perspective of what that requires in the background. So based on that, I move that we nominate Sue Tamel as our Denko nine one one representative.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a motion by councilperson Hillier and a second by councilperson Wellen. I think, or Lynn, sorry. Can we go ahead and call a vote?
Yep. Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Wharton?
Aye.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
The motion passes for discussion, excuse me, for nominating Sue Tamel for the Denko nine one one District Board of Managers by the town of Double Oak. There's a little bit of paperwork that we'll have to do, I'll work with Lynn on that. And we'll make sure we get our contact over to Sue and let her know that we have nominated her. And she'll do a fabulous job. I was very impressed the other day, as were others, so. Moving on to item fifteen, discussion, consideration and action on a supplemental request from Half amending the Waken Road contract to include costs of construction inspection, forty five thousand dollars, construction administration, fifteen thousand dollars, and material testing, eighty five thousand dollars, for a total cost of one hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And as you will learn in Randall's presentation, as well as the gentleman from Half, these charges that are referenced here, Double Oak has made their commitment. We have fulfilled our commitment on Waken. But because of the way the process works, and we will be explaining it here in some simplified terms, these are two steps that we have to take to make sure that all the items are passed through and the appropriate parties are paid. So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Randall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, I want to actually call forward, as some of you may already know, Steve Templer, who was with Half and was our town engineer, was blessed with a job opportunity and has moved on. We still have a contract with Half and Jacob Hayes will be coming this afternoon. He's actually familiar with the project and has assisted Steve Templer with this specific project as it's going on. So he'll actually be speaking on behalf of, as far as our town engineer at this time, while they're electing the next person to step into his shoes. So Jacob, if you could please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name's Jacob Hayes. As Randall indicated, although I'm not a resident of your town, I'm very happy to be here tonight to speak to you all on this particular project. As Randall mentioned, Steve, he got a better opportunity elsewhere, so we wish him well. We have identified a new person. I'm glad to have Brandon Tanksley here with me tonight. Brandon is out of our Richardson office. He's a licensed professional engineer in the state of Texas, so I have every confidence that he will be able to serve the town of Double Oak well in his tenure in this position. Me and Brandon have had the pleasure of working together our entire careers, so. As Randall mentioned, tonight, I'm here to discuss the long awaited final closeout for the Waken Road project. Those of you who have been in the town of Double Oak for quite some time know that this project has lasted well over a decade. And I'm pleased to let you all know tonight that the project is substantially complete. And it is finally complete. And it has been accepted by all of the inspectors. The town of Flower Mound holds the construction contract. And the town of Double Oak contributes through ICA or inter-community agreement with the town of Flower Mound in order to construct both the portions of Dub- or both the portions of Waken Road that are within the town of Flower Mound, as well as the portion of the road that is within the town of Double Oak, to make use of some cost savings by bundling the two projects together. So as of right now, ITS, or Innovative Transportation Solutions, who is the administrator for the county, or Denton County, has confirmed that there is approximately three hundred and eighty thousand dollars left in the county's money. As Mayor Johnson indicated, the town of Double Oak, they committed their one hundred thousand dollars as of April of this year. So that is purely money that was set aside or earmarked for the county for the construction of this project. As Mayor Johnson indicated, due to some construction overruns and the time, or the time delays on the construction of the project due to numerous reasons, there were additional material testing, construction administration and construction inspection costs that were incurred by my firm, Half Associates, in order to finish out the project. Those costs have already been incurred in good faith to help the project moving forward. And additionally, there are two change orders for consideration by Ed Bell Construction Company. One of those is an equitable utility adjustment on the order of a hundred and two thousand dollars. And another one is an equitable subgrade remediation on the order of a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. As of right now, there is approximately two hundred, hard to remember all these numbers off the top of my head, but there's a two hundred and two thousand dollars that has yet to be or that has yet to be paid on the construction contract. So we take that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars that ITS has confirmed that remains in the construction contract, and that leaves us on the order of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that remains for use on the project. During the course of construction, as I noted, there were several issues that led to delays. These are considered liquidated damages by the contractor. In the contract that the town of Flower Mound had with Ed Bell Construction, there was, there are damages associated with a substantial completion. And a substantial completion is whenever the roadway is opened to the traveling community. However, there are still items like sodding and grass establishment that have yet to be finalized. And then there's also a final completion where all punch list items that are identified by the engineer have been completed and the project is considered closed, which is where we are at at this time. Those liquidated damages amounted to approximately a hundred and eighty six days on substantial completion and one hundred and ninety two days for final completion, bringing the total of liquidated damages to three hundred, sorry, off the top of my head, three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. So at this time, and in the best interest, in my professional opinion, I would like to propose that we approach Ed Bell Construction Company and offer to not pursue liquidated damages in exchange for them dropping the two claims on the order of a hundred and two thousand dollars and a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. For those of you who may be in the construction industry, liquidated damages claims often get very tumultuous and there are a lot of back and forth and nickel and diming. So it's my professional opinion that this option would leave the city, or sorry, the town, out no money at this particular time. So if it meets the council's blessing, then I would like to request that we receive authorization to approach Ed Bell with said commitment.
Randall, anything you'd like to add?
So I know that's a mouthful, to be quite honest. At the end of the day, Ed Bell, Ed Bell does have two requests for charges that they're asking for due to project concerns that had come up. Ultimately, at the end of the day, they went beyond their scope of the timeframe that they were supposed to meet, which is the liquidated of the timeframe that they were supposed to meet, which is the liquidated damages portion of it. Typically, contractors know this going in, so they start asking for these items specifically so that in the, in the potential end of it, they can come out in a wash so that they don't owe anything because they realize the liquidated damages are so, so much in volume that they're trying to find a way to adjust it. They're, so at the end of the, at the end of all of this, what ultimately is happening is we're just, what Half Associates is stating is they're just offering it as a wash. They're just saying, hey, look, we'll drop the liquidated damages portions of this. If you'll drop the two claims that you're requesting, ultimately leaving us in the black at the end of the project, which we realize that ultimately it's a little over thirty thousand dollars by the time it's all said and done with. We wouldn't receive that money because it's from Denton County, so I want to make that clear. I don't want anybody to think that somehow Double Oak is receiving funding, but it would leave us in the black and we wouldn't owe anything. And that's the main goal that we're looking at. And so this was the best option. This is a staff recommendation as well, from looking at everything, both myself and Mayor Patrick Johnson both looked at this. And this was the best outcome that led us into the black ultimately.
Council questions?
And this doesn't cost us any more money. It's money that's already been in reserves.
That's correct.
Through the county.
That is also correct.
We just need to, my understanding is from this is we need to just, as a council, vote to finalize this recommendation tonight so we can move forward and close the Waken Road project.
That is a hundred percent correct.
So what this would ultimately do is give Half the permission to send the letter over to Ed Bell Construction saying, hey, as a town council, if you approve, it ultimately will give them the ability to go back to Ed Bell and go, this is what we're offering. We're offering to drop the liquidated, the liquidated damages, apologize, kind of a tongue twister. And then ultimately, for the claims that you're trying to receive monies for, which would ultimately leave us in the black, as long as y'all approve that, then ultimately that's what they would be going back to do. And then we would wait to see their response. And then at the next council meeting, if they do respond by that time, I would bring that update to let you know ultimately if they have accepted that, then we would proceed.
So we're, we're dropping, just to make sure I understand, you're saying we're gonna, the offer is to drop the liquidated damages that they're proposing in exchange for us?
So their subgrade remediation charges that they requested, which is a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then the additional for traffic control devices as various other items, which came out to about a hundred and two thousand dollars. Ultimately, those combined charges together, which is around two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's just a round figure. That's not an exact number. We're stating that we will wash that, we'll drop the liquidated charges if they will drop their, what they're requesting from us.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure that.
No, absolutely.
I mean, it's a little bit, for people who don't do contracts all the time, we're not looking at them. It's kind of hard to.
No, I appreciate it. I want to make sure that y'all feel very comfortable with this decision, okay? So any questions are welcome.
Okay, so unless there's additional.
I was just wondering, this is not number fifteen on this item. Is this separate from that?
Yes, these are completely separate. The next item is, the next item we will actually talk about, but it has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Specific.
That's just what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Well then, moving forward, let's see if I get this right. I move that we drop, propose to, that Half, in our behalf, propose to Ed Bell Construction that we drop the liquidated damages, that we drop the liquidated damages charge if they will drop the requirements for additional costs associated with Waken Road.
Can I, can I add something?
Absolutely, please.
Did I get that close to right?
I'm terribly sorry.
Or do I have it backwards?
But it also would include the authorization of the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, yes, okay. Plus the authorization for the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And again, that's not out of our, out of our,
Yeah.
Out of our, out of our budget, this is all coming out of Denton County. We're just, we're just tying up loose ends.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Bill is a good question.
Yes. Now we are discussing items. Yes. No.
No.
So I won't, yes, just item fifteen only.
So I would say we would want to withdraw that motion, but then just kind of use the verbiage that's here with a motion.
Okay. I will move that we have Half represent us in amending the Waken Road contract to include costs of construction inspection for forty-five thousand dollars. Construction administration, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and material testing, the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, for a total of cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars if they drop the liquidated damages.
Very good.
Which was not in there, but that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, that is correct. So the, we can't include the liquidated damage piece. This is only, only what's on the agenda is what we can write, do the motion for.
Okay, so I withdraw the liquidated damages portion of that motion. Or do you want me to restate it?
Please restate.
Okay. I move that Half representing us goes to Ed Bell Construction to drop the cost for construction inspection of forty-five thousand dollars, construction administration for fifteen thousand dollars, and material testing, the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars for a total of cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to the town of Double Oak and Flower Mound in Dent County.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna correct it. I apologize. Just so that everybody understands, I apologize. There's a lot of confusion because there's a lot of information. Number fifteen is just a discussion, consideration, and action for the supplemental request to approve Half's amendment for them to get paid the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the amount of money owed for what they did through the remainder part of the project because it was extended and they rendered services. That's all this portion is for.
Okay.
If that helps clarify, and I apologize. I know that we had a longer discussion reminding about other items, okay? So this is just for that. I just wanted to mention that.
So really, it's just the verbiage that's inside of item fifteen is what needs to be moved on.
Which is why we dropped the liquidated damages portion of that.
Right.
And it doesn't involve the name of Bell either, so.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah. This isn't that portion. This is just to prove their, their amount of money. What he was just doing, what ultimately what Half is doing is just making sure that y'all understand everything that's happening according to the Waken Road project so that y'all are informed about how money is being spent. But this specific portion of this item is just for an approval for paying them for the hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's all.
Okay, so the movement is move to request from Half amending, move to approve the request from Half amending the Waken Road contract to include the cost of construction inspection at forty-five thousand dollars, construction administration at fifteen thousand, and material testing at eighty-five thousand for a total cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yes.
Fourth time's a charm.
That was hard, yeah.
Well, yeah.
This, this was a tough one because of the way it came in. When you first read this, it didn't, didn't come off real well, so, but I think we got it right there. So we have a motion by Gene. Do we have a second?
Actually, it was a motion.
I'm sorry, a motion by Pat, sorry.
It's all right. We'll get it.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Pat, a second by Mike. Lynn, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Mr. Wortney?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
So we have, we have passed the, the vote on the supplemental request from Half amending the Waken Road contract to include the cost of construction inspection, forty-five thousand, construction administration, fifteen thousand, material testing, eighty-five, for a total of one forty-five. We have passed.
Okay, so what does that do to Bell and his negotiation related to the other stuff?
Fair question.
But I mean, he's still got to negotiate it, right?
That's correct.
Right. But he has to go negotiate it on our behalf or on their behalf?
No, that's ours. That this is our town engineer. He's on, he's doing it on our behalf. The negotiation that he's talking about is regarding their, their request for additional money.
I get that.
And so he is, he's gonna, he would go back and provide a letter to them letting them know that we're, we're willing to come to the table and say, we'll drop the liquidated charges if you'll drop your claims that you're requesting.
So he is going to come back with that answer?
Correct.
Yes.
And then that will come back to us eventually.
Yes, ma'am.
And you'll sit through this again?
But with less verbiage.
You did an understanding job. You was on a Zoom call on Friday and with Flower Mound and a bunch of other folks and it's, it's complicated, but at the same time, everybody kind of knew what they wanted to get to. And then at the end, there were some emails traded back and forth between Half and the town of Double Oak, and I felt very confident that you guys had accomplished what we were looking to do. Thank you. Moving on to item sixteen. Discussion, consideration, and action on the release of funds in the amount of two million sixteen thousand four hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents for the Waken Road project. Presentation by Public Services Randall Anglin.
Okay, so, and Jacob, you can kind of share if, if it gets to that point, of course. This is the money that is received from Denton County for us to basically shore up what is owed. The money does have to be sent to town of Double Oak the way the contract states. So we receive the money, and then we turn around and we go, here you go Flower Mound. You're the ones ultimately who are handling the contract. And so this money goes back to them. This is paying for all the work that has been done. This is money that is owed. It does come directly from Denton County to us, and then we transfer it over to Flower Mound. We receive the money. So we're in, in light of transparency, we're wanting to make sure that everybody understands. We have received the money from Denton County. It is now, and it is now in the account, and we are just asking, letting y'all know so that y'all, so that y'all can approve for us to now exchange that over to Flower Mound as money owed for the project and rendered services. That's what this is for.
This is a pass through.
That is correct.
That is correct. Yes.
Because we are a portion of that contract, so everybody has to agree to this.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Just want to make sure I.
And to be very clear, this is money that's owed. We don't, this isn't, this isn't our money and we're not trying to withhold it from them. But we do want to make y'all aware of it, that it, that we have received it. This is absolutely normal, and we have to move it now over to Flower Mound.
We received that money, what, a couple of weeks ago?
About a week ago, I would say, yeah.
And then when will we pay it out?
As soon as you approve it, we will get this taken care of.
Well, that's pretty simple since, since it's a pass through. So I move that we release the funds in the amount of two million sixteen thousand four hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents for the Waken Road project.
I second.
We have a motion from Gene and a second from Mike. Lynn, please call the vote.
Mr. Wortney?
Aye.
Ms. Hillier?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Item sixteen passes. Discussion and consideration in action on the release of funds in the amount of two million sixteen thousand four hundred and four dollars and seventeen cents for the Waken Road project has been, has passed. Last item on the agenda this evening is, it's really going to be a discussion on filling a vacant council seat. When I ran for mayor, I ran for mayor based upon transparency. We, we could have this evening filled the seat that I vacated. And, and what I wanted to do is explain what has to happen for the filling of the vacant seat, and then we will take it up at the next council meeting and, and go for nominations for the, for the seat. So it's very important that everybody understands it. So lessons learned from my previous stint as a short-term mayor. So I want to make sure that the town understands this. So an appointment to fill a town council vacancy need not be done immediately, but it should be done as expeditiously as possible. Any qualified person, i.e. registered voter in Double Oak who has resided in the town for at least the past twelve months can be nominated by the current town council and appointed to fill a vacancy on the town council. The person who is nominated and voted for the open council seat will serve as the town council member for the remainder of the open town council member's term in office, which will be in the next election cycle in May of 2024. The appointment is by nominations made by council members. Next town council meeting, I will ask for nominations from the council, and any council member can nominate anyone who is qualified to serve. Once all nominations are in, I will call for a motion for the first nominee. A motion should be made to appoint the first nominee. If the motion fails, we go to the second nominee and ask for a motion. If that fails, we go to a third nominee, and so on until someone is appointed by majority vote. The mayor does not vote unless there is a tie. So the town council will look to fill the vacancy of the open town council seat at our June fifth, 2023 town council meeting. I wanted this to be informational, but we can also have a discussion if we would like counsel.
I have a couple thoughts. I don't know what plan is to advertise this, but I suggest that at, at least an email blast be sent out to all the subscribers to town council announcements or town announcements so that they're aware. Also, there is a form that was, has been used in the past to fill vacancies. It's called application for town council. That can be filled out by candidates. That lists their name, address, contact, phone, email, professional and or community activities. List qualifications you feel may make you a good candidate for this position and include previous volunteer positions, references, and then you can either mail the completed form to the town of Double Oak Town Secretary or fax or email it to eileenkennedy@doubleoxtexas.gov or lindjones@doubleoxtexas.gov. And I suggest that rather than town council members anticipating people emailing and saying, I'm interested, maybe we want to publish this form and make it available for interested candidates to, to apply for the open position.
Yes, I will take that under consideration, and we will, what I need to do is just double check with the town attorney, but I think, I don't want to speak for the town attorney, but I, I think that is a possibility. So let me get with him.
Yeah, if you would just verify that.
I'll verify it, and then I tell you what, I'll verify it and I will have it in, in the Friday announcements.
And if there are any updates to the forum, for example, it says Eileen Kennedy, but since she's out,
Right.
maybe it would make sense to change that to Town Secretary because I'm assuming most people have access to that or whatever. But anyhow, for sure Lynn, but I mean, I don't know if Eileen's email is getting checked, which is why I'm mentioning that.
She, no, she's checking.
Is she? Okay. I didn't, wasn't sure if she was checking email or what. So I just, okay.
So I will get with our town attorney to just validate this process. He didn't reference it when I spoke with him or emailed him with him earlier, but again, I'm totally open to doing the right thing here, so.
Well, if we, if we get them, then, then the town council has an opportunity to look through those and review them, just.
Yep. And so I will do an update in the Friday announcements on this after I get to the town attorney.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Does that work with you, counsel?
Yes.
So again, this was a discussion item only this evening, so there's no action or voting. So next up is council and staff announcements and comments. Anything from the deputy mayor pro temp?
No.
Gene?
Double Oak Women's Club is meeting here tomorrow night at seven PM. For those who are members, please come.
Excellent. Pat?
Nothing from me.
I've just, Randall?
I'm great, sir.
Lynn? All right, I've just got a couple items. On behalf of the town and council, we'd like to thank the Double Oak Women's Club for their hard work on the landscaping, the median, and the town hall parking lot. It looks great. Thank you. We'd also like to thank Michelle White for donating the plants and the supplies for the median. Michelle owns her own landscaping company, and her generosity allowed the Double Oak Women's Club to provide the new look for the town hall parking lot. Thank you, Michelle, if you're out there watching. And a special thanks to, to Brian, to Randall, to Lynn, to Eileen, to Mike, and, and all of those folks who set up this great evening of celebration. Very much appreciated. If we could give them a hand, please? And counsel, is there any further business we need to discuss?
No.
So if there's no further business, is there a motion from the town council to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
All right. It is now eight forty-nine, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.